Milton.
Pauls.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Garnett.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jerem.
Mr. President.
Please stand for the pledge and invocation by Councilmember Franklin Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Instead of a traditional prayer, I'd like to give a request, a challenge. A week before voting, I'd like to say that it's important to get out there and vote. We've had low voter turnout in recent elections, and so this is an important one. It doesn't matter what party you are. It doesn't matter if you're rich or poor. I believe strongly in voter participation in the democratic process. My prayer is that we really take that responsibility seriously and that we get geared up for an important vote for next Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Your man.
City Clerk certifies publication on daily record on October 24th. That was for a pre-council and regular city council meeting October 28, 2014. Copy of meeting text is posted in White Finder on the East Wall legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions will only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off your mute and electronic devices.
Ordinance on final reading and resolutions rate bonds. Item number five is an ordinance supplemental ordinance number 37505 authorizing and directing an issue as additional bonds in one or more series not to exceed $160 million. Sanitary sewage system revenue bonds to be identified as sanitary sewage revenue bond series 2014. A is an amendment of the whole.
Public hearing was held on October 21st. We have an amendment of the whole.
Move the amendment of the whole.
Second, roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment of the whole is passed seven to zero. Item number six is resolution that the preliminary official statement pertaining to the issue and sale of sanitary sewage system revenue bond series 2014 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $160 million by the City of Omaha is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number six is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item number six is adopted seven to zero. Zoning ordinance is on final reading and planning board attachments. Item seven and eight are one case. Seven is ordinance to rezone property located at 3702 North 30th Street from general commercial district to its community commercial district. Eight is ordinance to rezone or ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI 1PL district to incorporate that district in to incorporate into that district the property located at 3702 North 30th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on items number seven and eight are today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven and eight are passed seven to zero. Nine and 10 are one case. Nine is ordinance to rezone property located at 9527 and 9601 North 30th Street from R2 Single Family Residential District Low Density to R4 and R4 Urban R435 Single Family Residential District High Density to R2 Single Family Residential District Low Density. 10 is ordinance to rezone to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearings on items nine and 10 are today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Nine and 10 are passed seven to zero. Item number 11, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a planned unit development overlay district in an R6 Low Density Multiple Family Residential District located southwest of 60th and Hartman Avenue. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 11 is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
11 is passed seven to zero. Item number 12, resolution to plan entitled Wingate Ranches 2 Replat 1 located east of 214th and Francis Streets along task conditions hereby accepted in preparation final plat is hereby authorized. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 12 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
12 is adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, do no meeting being held November 11th. Agenda item number 13 through 14 shall be laid over three weeks to November 18th for publication of public hearing. Item number 15 liquor, item number 15, voodoo taco, 2295 South 67th Street, Class C liquor license nullification and location.
Public hearing on number 15 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Kelly.
Mr. President, members of council, good afternoon. Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, appearing here with Mr. Newton. This is another taco stand, voodoo taco, which have been very successful, and this one goes into Exeter Village with your blessing. We'd be here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, just wondering, is there something special about the sauce that you'll use for voodoo tacos?
I'll let Mr. Newton answer that. Give your name.
I think you asked me, Eric Newton, I think you asked me a similar question last time I was up here, and nothing special, I just can't tell you what's in it.
Ancient Chinese secret?
Yes.
Okay.
He was trying to get the recipe for a second time.
We could tell you, but you know, we'd have, you know. Okay. Move the approval.
Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President. Oh, Jerem passes, and Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It is adopted six zero one passing.
Thanks.
Item number 16, Uncle Mattio's Pizza Joint, 2521 South 132nd Street, Class I liquor license nullification and location.
Public hearing on number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Sean Simmons. I am the franchisee of Uncle Mattio's Pizza Joint. We're a fast casual restaurant where you go through the assembly line like Chipotle or Subway, choose your dough, choose your sauce, choose your toppings, grill high-quality ingredients, fast, and we'll also serve beer and wine with your blessing.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sean, I have a couple of questions. Number one, I'm glad to see you're in the business, but I've also looked over a number of issues dealing with the police sort of last since 2002. I count around 15 opportunities to be with the police. Explain this a little bit to me.
I definitely have past history with issues on the road. I've had a lot of speeding infractions. As you can see, though, before these last two, which were speed traps, it was three years before my previous one, and kind of grew out of that, I suppose. I take it to the racetrack when I have the need for speed now.
Okay. Now, as I go up, I see more than just speed. I know just recently is in, see, to me, just saying a speed trap is an indication.
Well, I mean, it wasn't excessive as opposed to the reckless driving that was reduced to careless driving, which was excessive speeding. There was no substances involved or anything like that.
Okay. I mean, I, all of us need to have an opportunity, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, fair to say the food will be fast and the driving won't be, right?
You got it.
Mr. Jerem.
I was just going to ask if, how old are you, Sean?
I'm 28.
All right, so I would be the proverbial person living in the glass house if I were to say I never got a speeding ticket, but I think that when you have as many as you have, you want to make sure that as you mature into your new position in this business, that your driving habits mature along with you, and don't be surprised if we recommend favorably here for you today that the Liquor Commission doesn't ask you to come up here before them to convince them that you're maturing in that. Fair enough.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. No further lights. Second, roll call.
Milton.
Pass.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
All right, we'll go with it.
Thank you, sir.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And pass the second time for potential conflict.
Family friend.
No.
Family friend.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is adopted six zero one passing. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda should be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed unless otherwise provided by City Council laws of order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 17 and 18 were held on October 21st. Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
17 and 18 are passed seven to zero. We're going to remove items number 30 through 36 from the consent agenda.
Public hearings on agenda items number 19 through 29 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none. Public hearings are closed. Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
19 through 29 are adopted seven to zero. Now, we'll take items 30 through 36 as one case. 30 is resolution to the appointment by the mayor of Carl Anderson to be a member of the Old Town Elkhorn Business Improvement District. 31 is Corina Kruger. 32 is Michelle Minnick. 33 is Andra Ramsey. 34 is Kevin Stork. 35 is Brian Thompson, and 38 or 36 is Arnold Weitz to be members of the Old Town Elkhorn Business Improvement Board.
Public hearings on items number 30 through 36 are today. Proponents, please.
I'm Carl Anderson, the president of our merchants association out there, from Little Scandinavia. My address is 2619 Main Street, and we want to thank you, I think before, not I think, we want to thank you previously, you have approved our TIF funds out there, and we're, we've hired an architect, and I've got some pictures here, I'll show you, but I'd like to ask approval for these folks here to form the BID, if you would. We've got a lot of ideas out there, and if you've ever been out, we'd like to welcome you to come out and see that our sidewalks and streets and lights absolutely are terrible, so we want to use all this to keep improving the area and just make it look better, I guess.
See you guys.
Lay it on the table, and the camera will pick it up. Oh, we're high-tech. Get that. Now, that's based, that's basically the area that's involved, that's the Old Town area. This main thing is the main street down through there, if you're familiar with Boyd.
There's a mic you can use.
Oh, okay, thank you. This main street is here is Boyd and Charlie's, Highway 36 is, or Highway 31 is out here, 204th Street. Turn in, you come in Corby, and then this here, but if you notice, we've got trees, plantings, we've gone to two-way instead of one-way, which it currently has, and that affords us a lot more parking, to pick up a lot more parking. Next one, just as a, as a picture of what it would look like looking down Elkhorn Drive, just looking down Elkhorn Drive right into the businesses.
Flip it around for us. Flip it around for us.
Oh, I like it upside down. I don't think I, sorry. Yeah, there you go.
Unless that's how you were going to build it. No, I'm just kidding.
Mine, you never know. Anyway, if you're familiar with the area, this is Boyd and Charlie's Barbecue, this is Belavita, Little Scandinavia, and Andrea's Design, and so forth here. This is Elkhorn Street, this is Main Street, but just some highlighting, some trees, some new lighting, and that kind of thing. Stop me if you have a question or online. And these are just probably not as important to see for you, but they're layouts of the street. Let's see, does this go this way? But just shows what he wants to do as far as some clockwork, and that's what I think. Okay, that's it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings are closed. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Carl, if you could come back to the, to the microphone.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The BID, first of all, thank you for coming today. I know that BIDs are important, and this is something that we're all doing here in our various districts. I believe you are our third one. And I also wanted my colleague to the right here, Rich Pauls, to be able to meet and hear the plan. So, where are you at in terms of the finances right now?
As you know, the BID has been approved by you folks, and I thank you for that once again. Finances, we have a bank online who's willing to advance us the money, so we are currently, met last week again, we're currently, we've got Dave Ciaccio on board, and he has currently set up a surveyor to survey the product, the area affected, then he will go into some construction documents, and as the money comes in, we will, we've got this phase so we don't overspend, and so that's where we are. He's working on the survey right now, then he'll do construction documents, and then as we get money or as the bank is willing to advance this money, we'll build to certain phases.
Do you have any pictures that show us the total area?
The top one there is that, you know, no, I do not, not the total TIF area, this is the total, excuse me, not the total TIF area, but that's basically a total BID area.
Okay.
They're two different things, yeah.
Uh-huh, okay. To what degree have you, have you achieved buy-in from the neighbors that are close by the businesses?
A high degree of buy-in. I'm, I would, I'd lie to you if I didn't say there aren't some opponents, I would think there's anyone that's opposed to a little bit extra taxes, but I'd say most are for it, that we have been able to contact, and we're, we keep contacting through mail, through the newspaper out there, through word of mouth, and so it seems like every month we have a meeting that a couple of new people that show up, and they've always been for it, so the ones that I hear that are opposed, they don't ever show up, which is usually the case, but...
What kind of numbers are you getting at these meetings?
We're in like 30, 35 people.
Okay.
That means we have, we have a 10, we have a membership of 35, I would say 75% of that are the members, and the other 25% are people that are interested in what we're doing.
Mm-hmm, okay. Would it be all right with you if I passed your name and number onto the Douglas County Gazette so you could be interviewed?
Absolutely. Not problem at all.
Okay. It's time for the paper to get involved with what you're doing out there. Projections, what kind of timetables are you looking at?
Well, we're hoping to start construction next spring. One of the Cassie, I'm trying to get Cassie's last name, with the mayor's office.
You can, you can call her Cassie in the green.
Okay, Cassie in the green. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Segren.
Not anything, say anything bad, right?
Cassie Segren.
She, she was out, was real helpful, and one of the things that came up was that the city has plans to do a sewer line down through there like in 2017, I think it is, and we were hoping to start next year, and I, I was in the construction field for 20, for 40 years, and last thing you want to do is do this and then have to tear that back up, so we're rethinking that schedule, if we could move the sewer project up first or delay ours a little bit later, so we're starting, we were thinking about starting next spring with one, Phase 1, which is just some parking.
Okay, all right. Cassie, do you have a moment?
Cassie Segren, mayor's office.
Yes, Cassie, the sewer of which Carl is talking about, is that an extension of the north Main Street that we're going to start?
It was a new project in the capital improvements program that was approved earlier this year, scheduled for 2017 to be completed. It's the one that you and I had discussed.
Starts at Maple Street.
Maple, down to Cleveland.
Down to Cleveland, okay.
Yep, regarding the north Main Circle and running down.
So, thank you. So, Carl, you need to, you need to circle the wagons again and take a look at that timetable, unless there's some extra monies that you're throwing in to move our timetable on.
Yeah, no, we would not, I'm smart enough to know, I would not want to tear up street or tear up sidewalk and then two years later have them come do it again. We would be willing to wait if we can't move.
Okay. All right, anything else you'd like to say?
I voted yesterday.
All right.
Is that too many good? Yes, it is?
Yeah, powerful prayer. One last thing. What are you, are you going to, whenever you decide, the meeting that you're going to decide regarding the sewer, whatever meeting that is, will you invite me and Councilman Pauls to that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move the approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
Have you just for a second, too? First of all, I want to thank you, because the meeting I attended, I could tell you're probably the glue in this process, and I appreciate that, because we always need that type of person. Millard is looking in the future for something like this, so we may have to call on some of your expertise from, like for the small town.
Be glad to.
And so we'll probably be doing that, and every time I go to Elkhorn, I appreciate, I've lived in a big city for many years, but I was born and raised in a small town, and there are certain things that come from people who really identify what happens in those small towns. You know, they're just little jewels, and sometimes they need to be polished a little bit more.
Thank you.
And I'm just tickled to see what you're doing downtown Elkhorn, and hopefully in Millard. In fact, I challenged my other friends up here on the council that, you know, they brag about Dundee and Benson and all that, it won't be too long, and you're going to be hearing Benson and Millard in that same mesh.
Yeah, you wait.
Yes, District 2, and also South Omaha, I got to be careful. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, and I would add, we were joking about it early, early in the day, too, but it's great to see, this is something we've all thought about, expanding throughout our city, whether it is Benson, Dundee, or Blackstone, or South Omaha, or Millard and Elkhorn now, so these tools are, have proven to work when you present your master plan as you are, and TIF, and now your formation of a business improvement district. Pleased to see it happening out there, too, because it's a beautiful little neighborhood business district that can only get better for the neighborhood, and I'd encourage you as you're finding out now to spend the extra time upfront it takes to build that consensus, and it does take a lot of time to do that, but once you do, the benefits really pay off, so I'm pleased to see this today, and I think it's great that you and Councilman Thompson are pursuing this.
Thank you. We're having fun.
Thanks.
Okay.
Motion and second, roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Garnett. Gray. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 30 through 36 are all adopted to seven to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item number 37, ordinance to amend sections of the Orange Philcode, Chapter 44, Electrical Code, to adopt 2014 edition of the National Electrical Code to clarify the types of electrical wiring methods allowed within the city's jurisdiction for both residential and commercial buildings. A is amendment of the whole, B and C are communications and documents submitted.
Public hearing was held on September 16th. Motion and second, on the amendment of the whole. Mr. Thompson.
Let's see, Jay Davis.
Good afternoon, Jay Davis, System Planning Director.
Yes, Jay, just for the public record's sake, the last time you were up here, we had a layover, and then privately we met, and you thought you would get together with the various unions and the Electrical Board and work out some compromises, and then we heard this morning that the Electrical Board decided to just go with the original way that you had written it up, meaning that we're going back to the first.
That's correct.
With the first draft, so, so far, there's a motion on the floor to go with the amendment of the whole. How do you respond to that request?
What we've done is that we, we decided in the end to go to the Electrical Board, because of two things I heard during the public hearing were, number one, we didn't listen to our Electrical Board, and number two, the union didn't want the products or those types of wire, so we decided to go back to the Electrical Board with the amendment of the whole and with the original amendment, or the original ordinance that came through. They voted three to two with one abstention to go back to the original that was submitted initially, not the amendment of the whole.
So, from your point of view, the city's point of view, you don't want us to vote in the amendment of the whole?
To be honest with you, it gives us another layer to deal with that I don't think we need. As a matter of fact, right now in Douglas County, they've adopted the code as a whole, which means in some parts of the city, you can work on one side of the street, as it is right now, if it's adopted as we initially brought it down, then both Omaha and Douglas County would be the same. If you put the amendment of the whole in there, then Douglas County and Omaha are going to be entirely different, and that's on two sides of the street. So, as far as the amendment goes, adding the special permission provision really does nothing more than slow down a project to us. The code allows the products, we understand the union doesn't like it, we also understand the union is using it, and the first people to come through for special permission are most likely going to be union contractors. I mean, it's just the way it works. They do those kind of jobs that use that kind of material, and how do you, how do you juggle that? I don't know.
So, if I vote no on the amendment of the whole, that would make you and your department happy?
Yes, sir.
Anything else you'd like to say?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Milton.
Actually, I think Council, Councilman Thompson, I think clarified that, but I wanted to clarify something. We have the amendment of the whole, if we vote that down, will the, we then get to vote on the original ordinance?
Yes.[1632.83]
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, there's a motion and second, no further lights, roll call. Milton? Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Garnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jaram? Mr. President?
Yes.
The amendment of the whole is passed five to two. Resolutions, item number thirty-eight, resolution to the attached Deer Park Neighborhood Redevelopment Plan is approved as the redevelopment plan for the redevelopment of the area bounded by Martha Street on the north, Interstate eighty on the south, Twenty-first Street from Martha Street to Vinton and then west to approximately Twenty-second Street and Fifteenth Street on the east. Public hearing on number thirty-eight is today, proponents please.
Jim Anderson with the City of Omaha Planning Department. The Deer Park Neighborhood Redevelopment Plan is located in South Omaha, primarily around the Vinton Street Business District. It is about a two-hundred acre site that is a fraction of the whole neighborhood association area. The city proposes to acquire property and in some cases acquire deteriorated structures and construct up to ten housing units. And then, in addition to the new construction would be the rehabilitation of both owner and renter occupied housing. We're hoping that we could rehabilitate forty owner occupied and forty renter occupied. And then, as well as that, we are planning on purchasing houses that may be in rough shape, but we could pick up for a good price that still have life in them, particularly after they have been rehabilitated. And it's our intention to do five of those.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today?
My name is Jeff Deold and I'm a resident at seventeen, seventeen and a half Vinton Street. And I'm here to support, to express my support for the Deer Park Neighborhood Redevelopment Plan as both a resident and small business owner located in the heart of the planned area in the Vinton Street Commercial Corridor. While the Vinton Historic District continues to see positive investment that is slowly transforming it into a unique destination within the city, the many businesses that serve the residential neighborhood closely intertwined with the Vinton Street serve as a reminder that the district's success is dependent upon the health of the surrounding residential neighborhood. In the two years that we've come to know the neighborhood, it's been clear that Deer Park represents the best of smart neighborhood planning. A clearly defined street grid and modestly sized homes make for a pedestrian and cyclist friendly environment, allowing residents to access goods and services via active transportation. It's fairly well served by transit and its adjacency to both the downtown and the interstate make it a convenient place to live and do business. It's also been clear that its greatest asset, its housing stock, is distressed and that further dilapidation could drive away further investment along the Vinton Corridor. Following approval of the Vinton Street NCE District Plan earlier in the year, approval of the Deer Park Neighborhood Redevelopment Plan would signal to our current residents and to prospective residents and small business owners that the City of Omaha is committed to the continued improvement and development of the Deer Park Neighborhood while, most importantly, improving the neighborhood's housing stock and the lives of its residents. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other proponents?
Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ryan Tool. I'm the Creative Director of the Appleon at eighteen oh one Vinton Street. I'm also a resident in the redevelopment area at twenty-nine oh six South Eighteenth Street. Appearing in support of the plan, the very briefest version of the story that I can tell you is that, is that our company, the Appleon Art Space, was a traveling company for about four years before we decided on Omaha, before we opened a permanent space here. And in that process of deciding where we would be, we examined a number of cities and a number of neighborhoods. Even once we had decided that we would be coming to Omaha, we looked very closely at several of your neighborhoods, frankly. And, and we chose the Vinton Street Historic Business District very specifically because of the potential we saw in that area for further development and to become a destination, as Jeff mentioned, that would attract people from various parts of the city to do business on Vinton Street. We still believe in that potential. And to be very frank about it, I'm a person who, who believes that an environment for successful business depends a great deal on the strength of the neighborhood that surrounds those businesses, particularly in a geographic area where the two are so intertwined, where business and residential are sort of on top of each other the way they are in, in our area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents, is there one more? Okay.
Hi, Bob Price, twenty-four seventy-four South Eighteenth. I'm for this. I've lived in the neighborhood my whole life. I see Vinton Street go. It used to be a real vile area as, as went down. And any improvement would be nice, seeing the neighborhood coming back alive again. And I'm for this, thank you.
Thank you.
Oscar Diddon, live at twenty-four zero-two South Thirteenth Street, resident in Deer Park Neighborhood, also the president of the Deer Park Neighborhood Association. We've been working pretty closely with the Planning Department and our Neighborhood Association laying out what this plan should look like. This specific area is one of the most densely populated areas within Deer Park and actually within South Omaha. With an average rate of housing stock looking at over a hundred years of age, there's just so many opportunities for improvement. As some of the other proponents pointed out, there is a lot of opportunity, there's actually a lot of strong homeownership rates. Factor that in with, you know, thirty-five percent of the families at or below the poverty line, there's a lot of opportunity to help these families, homeowners, renters alike, to bring some vitality back to these residents and the neighborhood itself. A plan like this is only gonna help push our neighborhood further in trajectory, but also I think it'll send a strong message to the great partnership and that our city's aware to saying, how do we preserve our historic neighborhoods like Deer Park and how do we keep them from going down into a negative trend? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed, Mr. Garnett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Long time coming. Anytime that you have an opportunity just to share with my colleagues a little bit and please allow me some indulgence here. In long time, I mean a long time. I've lived in that neighborhood about all my life. And see where it has its peaks, its valleys, its peaks again, its valleys, and now the opportunity to shoot towards an even greater peak is, is very exciting. It was mentioned that our housing stock and some of our buildings need a little bit of a booster shot. And I think this plan provides just that. Who knows how far a million, two million, three million will, will go. But I can tell you, there is a team together to make, to get the best bang for the buck, both in the community side and on the city side. And we're ready to get that third and fourth leg of that stool put into, into place. And hopefully, with the improvements along, in this corridor and in this target area, would be an opportunity for even bigger and better things within the neighborhood. But as we all know up here, we have to start somewhere. And with this particular plan put into place, it's not something like tomorrow morning, and I've said this before, there's not gonna be bulldozers when you wake up in the morning out in front of your property. That's not what this is. It is a plan. There's going to be certain movements, it's fluid, it'll, you may see movement for a while towards obtaining a goal and then that might slow down and then there'll be some other movement within this plan. And it keeps going. But the key is, is that it keeps going and at the, at the end, there'll be an opportunity for everybody to get their arms around this. And in fact, it promotes the interaction and allows folks to become involved more and more as we progress, both the grassroots level and those our neighbors that are joining the area. So I'm excited about it. You can tell by the proponents that they're excited about it and I would move for approval.
Thank you, motion and seconds, roll call. Milton? Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes, and there's my buddy Magnus in the back.
Gray?
Yes.
Jaram? Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-eighth adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda item number thirty-nine through forty-three should be held on third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item forty-four, ordinance authorizing a purchase order to safe light fulfillment for a twenty-four month price agreement for auto glass replacement and repair. Public hearing on number forty-four is today, proponents please. Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Item forty-five, ordinance authorizing a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with forty oh one Farnham LLC to implement the forty Harney Farnham Tax and Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at forty oh one Farnham and forty oh four Harney Streets. Public hearing on number forty-five is today, proponents please, Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon, Bridgette Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Forty-six, ordinance providing for the transfer of non-exclusive permanent gas main easement to Metropolitan Shillings District running roughly parallel to Yates Park, thirty-three seventy-seven Lake Street. Public hearing on number forty-six is today, any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Item forty-seven, ordinance approving agreement with AOT Public Safety Corporation to provide billing and collection services for intrusion, fire alarm, registration, false alarm billing and monitoring companies' fines and fee billing. Public hearing on number forty-seven is today, any proponents?
Hello, my name is George Wilson. I'm the founder and chief operating officer of the Public Safety Corporation and I'm here to answer any questions you may have and also any questions you have in the future. Your staff will have my address, phone number, email. And I want to thank the City of Omaha for the last five years of work we have done in this same regard. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Item forty-eight, ordinance to approve the acceptance and authorize the distribution to the firefighters grant program to provide funding for updated training equipment at the Omaha Public Safety Training Center and replace outdated rescue tools. Public hearing on number forty-eight is today, are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Item forty-nine, ordinance to approve acceptance and authorize distribution of the state homeland security grant to fund tri-county regional strategy, strategic projects that will provide first responders and emergency response communications in Douglas, Sarpy and Washington Counties. Public hearing on number forty-nine is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed, Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, we had a brief description of what this could provide for the City of Omaha and the surrounding areas. And I do see that we have Phil, Phil Rue. Could I have you come down and just talk a little bit about forty-nine and you can throw in something about eighteen also if you have. The concern I have is a lot of times, good things are happening and people who are not in our meetings don't realize how prepared or unprepared that we are and I'm hoping that you can enlighten us on this.
Definitely, Phil Rue, Mayor's Office. Item number forty-nine is the acceptance of the two thousand and fourteen state homeland security grant program, which is a federal program provided for by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA. And in terms of your question about preparedness, preparedness is really hard to gauge because there's not a value you can put on preparedness. I would describe it more as a continuous education process and that is really something that we focused on heavily in what is called the tri-county PET region for which the City of Omaha is the fiscal agent of these grant funds. And then, go ahead.
No, no, no. Well, when I first read the word PET, oh, this is, but what does PET mean? I understand, I have this.
Sure. PET stands for Planning, Exercise and Training and that's the way that the state, meaning the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency, NEMA, allocates funding on a state level. So there is, I believe, nine PET regions throughout the state. The tri-county region is our PET region and homeland security grant funds are allocated based on those PET regions. In terms of the tri-county, we're really putting an emphasis on planning, exercise and training. As I said, it's a continuous education process because of personnel turnover within the first responder community, but just also because there is always new processes in place, there's always new threats emerging that we have to get prepared for. Active shooter would be one of those, unfortunately, one of those threats that has emerged in recent years.
And I'm curious, because this runs about eighteen months, it ends in January of two thousand and fifteen, so this.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, I'm sorry. So this training and planning, everything with this, it seems more complicated for five hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and this is an annual grant, so while this ends in January two thousand and sixteen, we currently have the two thousand and thirteen state homeland security grant currently is still running until January two thousand and fifteen. So these are really annual allocations that allow us to engage those first responder communities in terms of training, in terms of exercises, and really get them up to speed.
Okay. And then I'm just gonna jump a little bit to eighteen. We talked about certain kits, you know, drug kits and things like that.
Right.
Can you just sort of go into that?
Sure, so number eighteen is the acceptance of a bioterrorism hospital preparedness grant program for what is called the Omaha Metropolitan Medical Response System, or OMRS for short. And that will fund various drugs that can be used as antidotes for nerve agents, for example. And there is quite a bit of money in there for warehousing because those drugs have to be kept at a cool temperature at all times to, in order to extend the life cycle or the shelf life of those drugs.
Okay. So in other words, you're indicating to me though that we are practicing and we do have some assets set aside in case we need.
That is correct.
So the public should be feeling comfortable?
I would say so. I mean, given the, given the level of relationships that we have built within the first responder community, I think we have a tremendous program going. I'm not gonna be shy about, you know, boasting about that. I think, but there's always more to do, you know, you should not rest on your laurels, you should continuously improve and train.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, next title. Item fifty, ordinance to approve the acceptance and authorize distribution of the Nebraska Crime Commission Grant to provide funding for juvenile firefighter, fire setters program focusing on youth fire safety, education, arson prevention and increased information sharing with Juvenile Justice Services. Public hearing on number fifty is today, are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Item fifty-one, ordinance to confirm the appointments of the initial members of the Board of Directors of the Omaha Municipal Land Bank. Public hearing on number fifty-one is today, are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, councilmembers, Marty Barnhart, thirteen oh four South Ninety-seventh Street here in Omaha. Omaha is attempting and looking forward to a new agency of local government. Thanks to your courage on July twenty-second, the Omaha Municipal Land Bank ordinance was approved unanimously by this council. Thank you so much. Since that time, I've spoken to many who are looking forward to this agency and what it'll be able to accomplish for our city, for redevelopment and for neighborhoods all around each of us. I'm looking forward to the day in the near future when nearly four thousand parcels in Omaha with some level of code violation will be researched, purchased and inventoried. The mission to facilitate the return of vacant, abandoned and tax delinquent property to a productive use will finally become a reality in our city. Ultimately, through coordinating partnerships around specific projects, the land bank will enable redevelopment. The land bank will not be a developer, a public housing authority or a developmental authority, it will be a public entity with a public purpose governed by a publicly appointed Board of Directors. The ordinance today that is before you would allow the initial appointment of the land bank board of directors and the ex-official members from the public and private sectors. If approved, it would put in motion a dream that some of us have had and held for many, many years. Thank you to Mayor Jean Stothart for her time and that she and her staff have put into these last three months to select the seven members and now the five ex-official members as well. Initially, this board will be busy choosing an executive director, overseeing staff additions, writing policies and procedures, seeking funding and composing a budget. In the future, the agency will be able to acquire tax delinquent property from tax lien and tax certificate and foreclosure sales, subject of course to statutory redemption periods, and will have the authority to acquire code and condemnation properties for resale from private, nonprofit and to governmental agencies. Also, the Land Realization Commission will be asked to sit down and combine their operations and their inventory with the new land bank. What excites me most about the land bank is what I mentioned earlier, and I quote again. Through coordinating partnerships around specific projects, the land bank will enable redevelopment. This means that this agency will work together with you and with many other agencies to plan projects and to accomplish change that will enable redevelopment in some of our most deserving neighborhoods. We've been waiting for this board and I'm grateful for your willingness to listen to our testimony today. There's a lot of work to be done and I ask you to approve the land bank board today and allow them to begin their work and to begin change in each of our neighborhoods. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, I wanna thank the members on this council for having done a lot of work towards this. Lot of years and a lot of work went into this and appreciate your work. And then I also want to thank the administration for going through many, many of the different resumes and picking the right blend. I've had a chance to look over these resumes and happen to know a couple of these people and I think it's a great blend. And so I want to, with that, move the approval.
This is only on second reading.
Okay. Still, outstanding job.
I'm anxious to get him going too. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, my compliments to the mayor and the mayor's staff for putting together a board that I think is going to benefit this community greatly. Marty, I don't know if you could have said it better, if it could be said better than the way that you put it, a lot of our communities. better than the way that you put it. A lot of our communities, a lot of our distressed neighborhoods have been looking for an additional tool that we could use to hopefully end some of the problems with abandoned properties, blighted and substandard properties, abandoned lots, and so forth, with the opportunity of creating an opportunity for developers to move in and do something really different in some of those areas. I see some of the members of the land, of the potential land bank board here today, and I'm really excited to, glad to see a few of them, and really excited to see you, to see you get to work. To say you're going to have to hit the ground running is an understatement. We got a lot of policy and procedures to write. We've got a number of things that, that need to be accomplished, but rest assured that I, and I'm sure the rest of this council stands ready to help you in any way that we can. Finally, I want to thank the members of the city council who worked with, worked with us to, to put this in place and, and work through some of the difficulties that we had to work through to make sure that all the i's were dotted, t's were crossed as much as possible. But there's a lot of work ahead, and, and I think we've got the task that, I think we've got the board that is equipped, able, and competent to do this work. So, thank you all, and appreciate your willingness to serve. And in a couple of weeks, let's roll up our sleeves and get started. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I agree with those comments, too. And I'm anxious to get you all going for those very same reasons. And I know we all are kind of eyeballing the next big tax certificate sale in March, and are hopeful that's a deadline you have in your heads, too, when you get up and going, to see if that's something we can't be impactful on. We have a very well-qualified group of people here to, to get on this and keep moving with it. And as you know, there's many things in the ordinance creating the land bank that kind of prescribes what it is, what your initial focus needs to be in terms of establishing an organization, presumably hiring some staff, focusing on potential conflicts of interest, automatic bids, and how that's going to work as an entity, and some of your ethical guidelines. But one other thing I'd, I'd point out to you that I'm, I'm sure you're aware of, but since you're here, I'll mention as well, that we intentionally put into that ordinance as well, is making sure the land bank forms some policies and procedures to engage neighborhoods. After all, this is about neighborhoods and impacting the situations Councilman Gray has just talked about in terms of demolition properties, condemned properties, irritable parcels, things that can be developed and put back into productive use. And this can have a huge impact on how that operates in our city, particularly if we effectively engage those neighborhoods. And I think the ordinance specifically says, format a strategy to engage neighborhood alliances and other community groups in that process. So I know it's something you'll focus on. I just want to emphasize that here today as well. Thank you. Mr. Grenant.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo my thanks as well to the council and all of those entities, both inside this building and outside the building, that have participated to get us this far. I can just go back to the grassroots level a little bit. I'm sure that each one of us, I know my colleague, Mr. Thompson, has probably heard of it, I almost gray his bone rings, and when we go out into the neighborhood, we'll always invariably, someone will come up and talk about a dilapidated, public safety hazard piece of property. And always, they'll just say, "Well, why don't you just tear it down?" It's not that easy to do that. There's a whole host of moving parts that have to happen before that dozer moves in to tear that down. And I think with the land bank, what we're going to be doing is providing, and I know we use this term a lot, but another avenue, another tool, another mechanism that will help in making Omaha an even better place and an exciting place to live and do what we do best. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights. We look forward to approving this next week. Next title.
Pursuant City Council Rule seven eight, third reading, public hearing agenda items number fifty-two through fifty-four shall be held on November eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Pursuant City Council Rule seven, see the public hearing agenda items fifty-five through fifty-nine shall be held on the second reading.
Motion, go into executive session.
Second.
And litigation.
And litigation.
Second. Motion, the second. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Two fifty-six.
City council will now adjourn to executive session to discuss only labor negotiations and litigation.
It's 4:06. Milton?
He just tells me to get my own.
Pauls? Pauls?
Yeah, here.
Thompson? Gurnett? Gray?
Here.
Jerem? Mr. President? Milton? Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett? Gray? Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Mr. President?
What did I say, yes?
Journing. A journey.
They take us out for a drink.
4:06.